Good morning, Bill.
Good morning.
Okay, it's nine o two and we'll bring the the meeting to order. So I started the recording. Just get rid of the little pop up box. Okay. So we wanted to cover two things today. One is to just review the vision document that I drafted after our last meeting where pretty much everybody put in their opinions on what we'd like to see. The vision over the next 25 years of the TC eighty area to be. And then within that vision, we said, here's said, here's the things which we'd like to see. And then we're able to sort of collapse it down into four different work areas where possibly we could focus different people's attentions that if they all came together that those four different buckets of of work would help us execute on the vision. And then the second thing we wanted to talk about was how do we communicate this vision? And how do we get feedback that would support this vision from the community and from residents and from other and and from business owners? Which will help move things forward as opposed to presenting something and having it having it knocked back or blocked. And I think it was Bill was your suggestion that maybe we should, we could do that through us through a series of surveys. So first of all, did everyone have an opportunity to go through the vision document that was drafted? And are there suggestions or recommendations on, you know, even if it's subtle word changes? Because one of the things I was thinking is possibly we could use this document to make a story to publish in our monthly newsletter that goes out with Stoneton sixteen forty nine and from that we could actually include one of our survey questions. So at the moment it may, yeah, so. Yeah, so. So let's just go around maybe each person to see if they, and I could bring it up on the screen if that was to, if that was helpful to anybody. What do you think? Okay, people are nodding, so let me see if I can share my screen. Kind of shrink it down a little bit. It's it's there. Okay. So the yes, so the first, like the first page and the top of the second page there is really just talking about the different things that we we talked about. And then I've got the four categories at the back of how we sort of, I think, hopefully putting a bit more like bullet point ideas on how do we? How would we achieve those vision things which we talked about in the first page? So maybe Susan, if I could start with you, are there edits or changes or things? And maybe rather than me trying to type and do things at the same time here, I might just sort of make notes and we can circulate a bit that way.
Sure, Kevin, I thought it was really important. You know, there's a line in the first paragraph where you talk about the fact that we're focusing our efforts in areas that are already covered by impermeable surfaces. And I'm I'm wondering for you and I and for most of the people in our group. I think we're very aware of the idea that we're trying to focus, you know, all of our efforts and all of our that the way you conserve on the outside is by directing that development appropriately and efficiently through those impervious surfaces. And I'm just wondering if out there in the public, if people really understand the linkage between, you know, maintaining water quality and those percentages. And so I'm just wondering if there's a way that maybe we can take what you take what you said and not, I don't mean dumb it down. I don't mean it like that because that that gives, I think, the wrong impression. But maybe if we could add another sentence somewhere or highlight the fact that, you know, there is a direct relationship between impermeable surfaces and water quality and the fact that we do want to, you know, maintain those green areas, not just that we want to do it, but maybe a little more about why? About why that would be important and the fact that we can be very efficient and use these areas that are already built. And, you know, that we can build them more without a lot of extra environmental impacts, extra traffic impacts. You know, those roads already are built to a standard that they could actually carry, I think, quite a lot more traffic than they carry. And there are also other means of transportation that are getting integrated around that with, you know, more sidewalks, more bike trails. So there are other ways to get around. So I thought it was really important, though, to make that linkage. And I just wanted to make sure that people who weren't engineers or who didn't work in our, you know, sort of wheelhouse, were really aware that that's why we were doing that. So that I think that was really my my only comment. I think it was great, you know, that we we call out in this document, it's sort of like, this is sort of the intersection of a lot of different things that have gone on about, you know, in in one meeting, I'm talking to someone about the river access, you know, near the highway. And in another meeting, I'm talking to someone about Coogan Boulevard and should it be reconsidered figured or should we be trying for safer features or what should we be doing? Or how can we get more sidewalks? And so we have so many different efforts, like the wayfinding with the signage, with so many different efforts that are happening in that in that little mystic triangle. And this is sort of, to me, this is what's kind of pulling it all together. That this is the thing that's going to like make it all make sense all in the same pit, on the same place. Does that does that make sense to you? Is that what you're getting to or am I just crazy?
So so I'm wondering whether maybe should we not use the word impermeable surfaces and should we use like car parks, car parks and roads?
I don't know. I was just. I always worry that, you know, I guess I was I was taught a long time ago that you should write your documents so that someone who's in fourth grade can understand them. And that's actually a real struggle for me because it's very hard for me to take, you know, sort of our professional language and take it apart into smaller pieces. But it has made me much more aware of trying to make sure that just the average Joe can understand what we're putting out there for information. Not just the people who, you know, sort of work in our area, the engineers, the planners, the architects, that everyone should be able to understand where we're coming from. So.
So in which case we shouldn't be saying impermeable services, we should be saying it's largely developed and and covered or covered with car with car parks and roads.
Can we just say paved?
Hey, there we go. It's even simpler. I can, a third grader might understand it.
Hey, Kevin. One comment, I've I know the nomenclature car parks, people might be more familiar with parking lots.
See, that's my, I know, yeah, right.
No, 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 no. Listen, I've done a lot of business in the UK, car parks, lifts. I'm I'm totally good with that. But I think someone in the US would might might be more amenable to parking lots. The I I laugh when you guys use the word impermeable surfaces. I actually had to go on my phone and I didn't, I never heard the term before. So making that change makes sense.
Yeah, and I'm aware of it because I went through a planning and zoning thing where we weren't allowed to put in a permeable surface because there wasn't enough seepage. So you're right, we should never have used it.
Okay, yeah. And Kevin, it's not a negative to you. I know exactly where the car parks come from.
Yeah, so actually I want to use Bill's word of paved. And I'm gonna say there's very little greenery.
If I could also throw in a little more semantic nitpicking. Tourist kind of has a pejorative connotation. Like, nobody wants to be referred to as a tourist.
Yep.
Right? Like, does anybody go anywhere and say, well, what are you doing here? I'm a tourist? No. Nobody wants to be a tourist, right? Everybody else is a tourist. Nobody's a tourist. How about maybe visitor?
I think that's more positive.
Because I think part of it too, as you sort of try to get people engaged, you're like, well, we don't really want tourists here anyway. We don't like tourists. But everybody likes a visitor.
Yeah, and and the tourists could well be family members or people, friends coming for weddings or for other events.
We like visitors other than New York and New Jersey?
Yeah. Saw one of the if we did this poll for real estates and 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 people said, there's too many big SUVs from from New York and New Jersey. We don't want those people coming here.
I do, I do like the term visitor much more.
Yeah.
Because I embrace visitors, I embrace tourists, but not everyone does.
I I lived in Jackson Hole, which went through a lot of these issues many years ago. People did and sometimes still do drive around with bumper stickers that say, if it's tourist season, why can't I choose them?
Okay, um, okay, Bill, as you had come up with that particular comment, and other changes that you recommend.
I have a question and and I don't know if this is the right document for it. The last sentence I think is critical for people to realize is a fundamental goal of this vision is to increase the grand list and spread the tax burden across more taxpayers rather than the existing Stonington tax base. I wonder if that's something you want to either italicize or put in bold? Because ultimately, that's what you really want to, that's what we should be doing. And and the thing is, people sometimes see the connection to that by doing all of this work. Some some people don't care, but I would say the majority of residents who live here full time or even those who have second homes and are here more than not, based on what's happened the last year, they may take to that sentence. That's my opinion. I don't know what everyone else thinks.
I I think that's a really important point. And we talked about this last time, that idea that we need to build a grand list is is not obvious to to a lot of people. They don't understand why that needs to, why that needs to happen. And I think if you can sort of tie it into minimizing the impact on the environment and natural resources while also minimizing the impact on existing residents. So build the grand list, but not in a way that people think of when they think of developing. Right? Because they think of development as, you know, mowing down forests and filling in wetlands and all kinds of other things. And lots more traffic past their house. So, you know, trying to figure out a way to articulate that, yeah, we're going to encourage development, but in a way that doesn't do those things.
Yeah. And so that comes back a little bit to, and I'll rework that first bit, the shade in yellow with Susan's point that we're better off developed or redeveloping the areas that's developed as opposed to you know, knocking down 10 acres of greenery and building something brand new there. I'll rework that. Okay, Keith?
Yeah, I'm on the same line of thought. I think maybe the term urban sprawl is one of those terms that sort of means many things to many different people. And, you know, maybe changing that term to something like reducing pressure on undeveloped areas like farmlands and forests. Would seem to sort of spell it out a bit.
Yeah, because I always thought urban sprawl was a negative, and that's probably why I put it in there. So.
Yeah, yeah.
So should you say, what I'll do is I'll just put a few words in there and I'll come back and rework it. I'll decide whether we want to then just leave the word or phrase urban sprawl in there. But if we said we should redevelop this area, you're gonna say you mentioned something like rather than new green space. Oh, I suppose I did put the green areas there. Okay, I'm gonna rework all that stuff that's in in yellow there and we'll rather than, and I'll do it separately rather than trying to take up time on the call now. Okay, Sherry.
I thought I thought the document was good. But I'm agreeing with all the other comments here and particularly Bill's point about changing tourists to visitors. When I was running the Shoreline Chamber of Commerce in Branford, my tourism initiatives were geared towards bringing people into the Branford Guilford area to spend their money. But it was also about getting the residents off their couches and out into our restaurants and in our shops. And for mystics, you know, attraction, you're bringing in people from Old Lime, where I live, or, you know, New London. And so they're not necessarily tourists, but definitely visitors. So I think that that's a really strong point. The other thing I'll mention is, you know, on your your bullet points, walking and biking trails, I think, is absolutely key to bringing in people and 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 just having them, having a way for them to get around. People are really interested in being outside and active. So I I particularly, I loved the document, but I do appreciate the comments that are being said today.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much, Sherry. Bruce?
Thanks, Kevin. Everything that's been said, I agree with. I had a question about connecting it. Is there a consideration to consider what Groton is doing? And tie like signage and and wayfinding information to a particular look that that the area encompasses as a whole. And then the only other thing was to and and you may have already done this, but just make sure I think that depending on how it's presented to the residents of Stonington, they may not want more people visiting. Or, you know, just, I think that just needs to be handled, I think, at least recognized. And and that the that the what what is being proposed is helping both is helping the residents as well. You know, like, so that they're, they don't feel like we're trying to just bring a lot of more people to Mystic, but actually to make sure they get here, there's an understanding of what happens when they get out the exit and that kind of stuff. So that's all.
Yeah, okay. And and you're not allowed to ask difficult questions. And your first question was too difficult. I just, if you, if you want to sort of just apply, I think, you know, it's a good question. We don't really have an answer for it.
You know, I, the reason, one of the reasons I ask is because I know that I've been working with the town of Groton on the Groton side of things for in front of the bookstore where we're putting up some signage and some maps, it's going to go into Stonington. You know, there's there's any representation on both sides of the bridge. And it may be a look or, you know, assets that that you may want to build on or you, you know, continue on the other side because, you know, Groton and Stonington are pretty tightly tied. So and I know that the signage that they have that they created, they were, and I think they were looking for the Stonington the town of Stonington to to at least consider something similar or keep that creative consistent on both sides. So that's why.
So I actually was part of the effort on the Groton side and we put together a very large map, a whole signage program down to the details of each placement of each sign that's going on. So I'm very well aware of what Bruce is talking about because it was effort that actually came out of my office. So if we do, you know, need to, you know, fill in the blanks, I can also, I can circle back the page if we needed to, if something's changed or gotten updated in the nine months that I've been gone. But we can, we can certainly, you know, work on that. And on the Stonington side, we did actually discuss, you know, continuing that effort. And we decided to continue the effort, but to sort of approach it in a different way. And it really was a sort of budgetary constraint of why that happened. But but there is a way that it is going to get continued. It's just going to be a little more creative and a lot cheaper. So.
And I suppose, Bruce, if you look at the the first work bucket, which is the welcoming gateway, then in that we do mention wayfinding to attractions downtown Mystic services, restaurants and shops. So so if we were, if we could do something, then that we've got an area where that work would do, whether you know, we could get it to all look the same, which would obviously be ideal. But, you know, there's always, you know, whether it's a chamber of commerce or whether it's the 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 Groton design. It 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 may be difficult to have everyone on, all everyone happy with using exactly the same looks and colors and fonts. But, you know, we do want to see if we can try to make it, you know, way have wayfinding so that people, when they get there, know what are my options now that I'm here. And not everyone's doing, you know, not everyone is looking at their phones and not everything, they wouldn't necessarily even go and look for everything on their phone. But if they saw a sign to say, here's riverfront access. Or, you know, you know, downtown area that might, oh, that's if it's only, if it's only one mile, then I then I could go there. Okay, and I made a note on your point about Stoneton residents may not wanting too many people. Now, I think I think that's possibly true for some of the downtown mystic areas, but I think for exit ninety. I think that there's less concern for residents. But I'll have a look at the wording that's been used and just make sure that that we want this document to be the motherhood and apple pie document where someone would read it and and embrace and think that sounds great.
Yeah, well, to Bruce's point, I I think that that's worth expanding on a little bit that we've touched on in that to communicate that it encourages visitors, but in a way that minimizes the impact to residents. You know, I think that's a really, a really important point that, you know, we're going to have them visit in a place that doesn't really bother you.
So Bill, you should have written this down. I'm gonna write that down. Encourages visitors, but minimizes impact on residents.
I I think one of the things we're really trying to do is take away everybody's arguments before they make.
Correct.
Well said.
You know, I think part of it is is that this is looking to complement downtown Mystic and not compete with it. And that's something, you know, over the years, I've heard about different proposals in this area is that, you know, the fear that new development up here might compete with downtown Mystic. And it's something you hear in other towns with similar circumstances. And I think that is what everyone's looking for is not the sort of reinvention of downtown Mystic, but things that are appropriate to this area.
Well, that's important to articulate. I think that it's a good point in that you know, they're very different. I mean, the overwhelming majority of hotel rooms are at exit ninety rather than downtown, right? Everybody visits downtown, but they sleep at exit ninety. So, you know, they're to differentiate that, I think, is is important.
Yeah, and I like the word complement each other because they do. And if we could find a way of having people sleeping at exit ninety, but being able to get down to getting to downtown Mystic without having to get in the car and find a car park at the other end would make everybody's life probably easier and happier.
Yeah, you know, another thing about this area too is that it's the only area around that's on relatively high ground where you can have development that's not in the floodplain. You know, it's more of a long term resiliency thing for the area. If you dwell on that too much, it sounds a bit doom and gloom, you know, like when the big one comes, you know, this will be more out of harms way. So I don't know if there's a way of sort of mentioning that a little bit without being sort of, you know, disastrous about it.
We might be able to spin that into a marketing slogan.
Right, right. You'll survive here.
Survival, yeah. Okay, let's move on to Chris Regan.
I I agree with most of the comments that have been stated. But I think a lot of it for the for the town, what I'd like to see is an effort to try to put the utilities underground. Because when you come off ninety, exit ninety, what do you see? You see high tension lines going all over the place. If we can get that and we try to beautify it, put some you know, pedestrian friendly lighting that's not you know, industrial looking, dress up the overpass of ninety five. So it ties into the other hotels to make it where they're more inviting to walk. Finish off the sidewalks on Coogan Boulevard down to Jerry Brown Road and try to get some sidewalks on Jerry Brown Road. Also, the wayfinding, I think the hotels have to do a better job of promoting it to have the the visitor utilize walking going through Coogan Farm to access to get down to the seaport. Get more signage for that to make the people know that it's there. But also down in front of the cemetery, not inviting. Anybody that's in a wheelchair, that that walk they're going through there, especially during winter is horrible. Even because of the trees is uprooted a lot of the asphalt, so it's uneven. So it's not really inviting for the the visitor to want to connect and walk to the seaport. But I think if we make a certain effort to try to make it attractive, I think more people will walk. And I think the local residents will appreciate it because those cars will stay at the hotels and they'll walk. And I think that's the biggest thing that we need to try to, moving forward, is to try to encompass that in the development of what of of any of the new developments, you know. And if we have twenty seven be more attractive, well, then it's going to spur other people to do stuff with their properties. Especially on the other side of the highway. That's, and I think the other thing I know when Bill was the plan, the planner for the town, he was trying to do a bus depot. I know he was trying to do something like that for get some transportation funds to create a hub where, you know, obviously, any new development, you gotta, you gotta give them incentivized to do structured parking. And then so you're not seeing the park, the the parking lots. You know, we have a lot of parking at the village, but we won't have a lot of parking if a lot of things get overdeveloped and they rely on us as their overflow parking, as shared use. So that would be a problem. So that's the one thing I want to make sure that we are very aware. Because on the Stonington side, we have all the parking for Mystic. The Groton side doesn't have it. And I think they need to solve that problem. And I think Stonington, we should encourage Groton side to try to do something with the art association and put a parking structure there that will alleviate and then get people to be able to walk and not clutter or or at the peak time of the season, have backup going down on a one lane, you know, a two lane road that just gets over burden and everybody, you know, has locals who'll take the side streets to go around it. So I I know it's my first meeting to be on, so I'm I'm just trying to turn my two cents on it.
Yeah, that's good, Chris. So, yeah, so what I think, and again, this, this is a vision document, so we're not going to sort of rule out, I was all like, that's really difficult, that's going to be really expensive. So I think I can integrate into the bullet point ideas at the back end of the document, your points around, you know, in a perfect world, we'd like to have, and I think it probably goes under I think the infrastructure one. It may be, you know, it comes under the welcoming gateway, like that, that's where we'll, we can include things like the underground utilities, the better street lighting, the the wayfinding of the signage is there to some extent. And then for the bus depot, ways of connecting with with downtown Mystic, I can add that in 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 there. So I guess the goal of this document is to have, here's everything we'd love to have in a perfect world. And then if we're looking at over a very long timeframe, then then some of them, we could hopefully do quite quickly and others maybe five or 10 years and others, you know, we 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 will see. But I think if it's not if they're not listed down and it's not in the back of people's mind, then that will, it will never happen. And I suppose who also in the back of my mind, I've been thinking with this, you know, if the federal government does pass some infrastructure bill, if we've got projects or plans or engineering and drawings done for things, then maybe there there does become an opportunity, which if you're not organized or planned, then then basically you're not in a position to get any, any help or support.
Yeah.
Okay, good. So let's, let's move on now to actually, before we move on to the survey questions, now let's get to the survey questions. I also want to talk about what other things do you think we should be trying to do to, once we get this document to the point that we're happy with it, which I think will be fairly shortly, how do we, how do we syndicate it and get it out there? Okay, so let me see if I can bring up the survey questions. Can you see the survey questions on your screen now?
Yeah.
Okay, so, oh, look at this. I actually used the right word visitors instead of tourists. Perfect. Okay. So oh, look at this. I actually used the right word visitors instead of tourists. So so I think we talked about we'd have a different set of questions for for different best constituents. So the first one is is, and again, I want to sort of keep it fairly simple and I want to keep it fairly much like, oh, here's the things which we want you to be thinking about rather than, you know, just give us a list of everything you don't like or don't want. So maybe let's go around quickly on on the visitor question. At the moment, it's like I need four questions, but I thought, anyway, so Bill, your views on on things we should ask visitors.
You know, maybe one observation is I think a lot of people don't know they're visiting Stonington. So you throw something in there and they're like, what does that even mean? You know, they they understand Mystic, they don't understand what I'm saying.
So so do you think I should get rid of the word Stonington?
I I think for the visitor one, yes.
Okay. We're appealing to fourth graders and you're probably right. I just couldn't bring myself to not put the word Stonington on there.
You could probably make it Mystic, maybe maybe make it Mystic area.
Yeah, but I think it is, we could probably just say Mystic.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Susan.
So one of the things that I didn't want to interrupt Mr. Regan, but one of the things that's not really out there in the public yet is that there is a mystic parking and traffic study going on right now. And what's interesting is I actually sat on the Groton side for that Mystic multimodal study. And I worked with Bill Haas on that study about fifteen years ago. And so I do remember very clearly what you're talking about about. You know, how do we how do we sort of move the people around Mystic more efficiently so that they're parking their cars once? And what that study back then showed was that there was enough parking, but there wasn't really in the right places. And so this this traffic study that we're doing downtown in conjunction with Groton is a little bit different than that, but some of the conclusions are very much the same as they were fifteen years ago. And some of it is talking about, you know, where could employees park? What other parking options could we give people? So it's a little bit of a different twist, but in some ways the conclusions are very much the same of the fact that you know, we don't have the parking in the right places to match up with where people actually need the parking. And so that's something that's actually being worked on. And probably just even in the next couple of weeks, you're going to probably see some things come out. And and we're going to start to try some new strategies and we'll we'll see if they work. You know, the hard part is that for the most part, the strategies that we know would work the best are the most expensive. So, you know, we'll probably be starting with the ones that are low cost and see, are they enough? You know, incrementally, if we do A, B, and C, is that enough to make an impact? So kind of stay tuned because there there might be something coming soon on that that might be interesting to you.
Thank you. And then Susan, any opinions or changes on those questions for visitors?
It's interesting when we when we always talk about Mystic, it's always that question about do we take the time to explain that, you know, Mystic is a zip code? And I always make it like a joke when we have visitors of that Mystic is a fictional place. And so and it's funny to talk to them about it, but it really is hard to decide, you know, what is the best strategy because we don't want to lose our own identity. And yet we don't want to make it hard for someone who's just visiting, who really doesn't care, you know, about the semantics of this is a zip code or this is a census designated place, but it's nothing else or, you know, they don't really want to hear about any of that and they don't really care. You know, they've come because they want to see, you know, a certain boat or they want to see, you know, or they've come for a wedding or or to a certain venue or to a museum. So I think it's important for us to be simple. And just like with the wayfinding on the Stonington side, you know, we will be sort of we're not going to do the exact same thing that Groton did, but we're also going to try not to, you know, sort of fight with it in terms of, you know, colors or styles or, you know, you're going to try to make it so that it blends across, but that it's not detracting to the visitor that they see a little bit of a difference, but not, you know, they're not, oh, wait a minute. Wait, do I have to stop? You know, this isn't the border. We have to show papers or something, you know, that this is, you know, we're in the same place. We have the same, you know, most of the same color scheme. So we'll see how it all how it all pans out. But I I agree that we, you know, maybe we don't take the time to explain that, even though I think we we all want to. It's hard to not want to to say, oh, no, you're Stonington now. This is this is a new place, you know, but to the average person who's going to get an ice cream, do they really care? They really don't.
Sherry.
I agree. Or I I'd like to just echo that visitors don't care what the place is called, what town it is. It's just Mystic. That is the draw. So a couple of things on the list of when you visit a town in New England, what are the key things you're looking for? Bars, I wonder if that should be nightlife rather than bars. Just to, you know, that's what I would call it. And then, you know, I was going between museums and cultural events because I think that their museums should fall under cultural events, but that, you know, if you want to get specific, cultural events is really about an event, not necessarily visiting a museum. So maybe they should stay separate. The other thing is casinos are really big draw and I wonder if you know, you don't necessarily visit New England for casinos, but I wondered if that should be a point because we could get traffic into Mystic from people that are visiting the casinos.
Yes, I think that's a good thing to know. It says entire end or between. And so if we found that 10% of the people who were coming here were because it was also the casino, I think that's that's an important thing for us to know.
Yeah. So should that be under why did you come to Mystic? Or because I know people that go to conferences. Yeah, people that go to conferences at the casino oftentimes end up in other towns or, you know, around.
Yeah, we'll we'll capture it up in the top one. Thank you.
And then the big question that you've already asked is, you know, how are we going to get this out there and, you know, ask the questions? So I'm sure we'll talk about that.
We'll come back to that one next year. Bruce.
Hi, thanks. Yeah, the first question, why do you come? Why did you come to Mystic? I think that I there may be some, maybe you can add one that just says, you know, I'm not sure the right wording, but took a chance off the highway, you know, like where it was didn't didn't mean to visit, but saw the signage and got off, you know, or you know, I like it could be like get something to eat on, get something to eat on our way to, you know, our destination or you know, something that kind of is like loosey goosey, but
Yeah.
you know, spur of the moment type deal.
Yeah. And then better, yeah.
Yeah. And then you know, I think that did Stonington, did Mystic meet your expectations? I think it's really broad. So I guess I guess, though, that you'll it will be pared down by what your answers to questions one and two were to know that, you know, it's some people who's somebody who pulled off for a vacation and was interested in hiking, but said their expectations weren't met. I guess I guess that will be where it will get pared down to figure out what is, you know, what's good and what isn't. But if they check off several different things, it may and again, I don't know how in depth you want to get. So you don't want to complicate things, but it's it's somewhat broad. That was it.
Yeah.
Bruce Kevin, I have a suggestion that might address the comment Bruce just had. What I was going to recommend for is remove the did Stonington Mystic meet your expectations and replace it with on a scale of one to five, how would you rate your experience while visiting Mystic? And then one being not at all satisfied and five being highly satisfied. And then you have your two open and comments after that question. And you kind of get to the crux of why they answer on a scale of one to five, what they felt like. So a lot of companies are doing in the consumer world.
Yeah, that's okay. And I admit, and you may even, again, I don't know what kind of survey we're going to be using, but you could actually combine two and three and just say, what did, yeah, I guess not, never mind. I'll take that back. I was thinking that you could you could say like if two was I came here for hiking and my expectation was met. I came here for nightlife and my, you know, how each one was met, but they're not they're not accompanying questions. So
You could get you could get even more detailed and two could be that question with each one of the one to nine items with a scale of one to five.
Right, right.
Similar. That's that's what you're talking about, Bruce, right?
Yeah.
So you could do that. So then we'd have an understanding of how the attractions rate, how the dining rates, how the nightlife rates, how the hiking biking activities, underwater activities, you could do that. So two could be how would you rate your experience while visiting Mystic in these areas, attractions, dining, nightlife, hiking, biking activities? That that is a way you can do it. It depends on how you want to do the survey. It gets a little more complicated, but at least you'll have a ranking for each one of the activities.
Yep, of the activities which they came here to do. Yeah.
And then if it's not appropriate, it's not applicable.
Right.
Not applicable.
And if you, yeah, and if you get high marks on restaurants and nightlife, but it's low on historic neighborhoods and cultural, you know, whatever, then you have an focus.
Okay, actually, I think that's a brilliant suggestion. So thank you. That's why you discuss things. So you come up with something that's better than always first. And maybe we could just do five stars and then people can click on whichever star rating they want to give.
Same thing. That that would that actually would be consistent with what they're doing on Yelp, what they're doing on Google.
Yeah. Okay. Chris.
I agree with all the stuff that they stated already. The thing I would like to see is being involved on the Eastern Regional Tourism District. We're trying to figure out how we make or get the visitors to make it extended stay because we have all the activities that they're looking for. So we're not a pass through state. So what I would like to find out is how long was their stay? And then would you come back? Because if they're here for multiple days, that means we're satisfying because right now the average stay is 1.4 days at a hotel stay. And what we'd like to try to get is to where it's a three or four day hotel stay. That means we're not a pass through state. They're not coming up through, just stopping and then going up to the Cape or up to Newport. We'd like to try to see if we can capture them and I think that's I'd love I'd love to see that in somewhat in the survey to see if they're just a day tripper or if they're here for a two night stay or a three night stay or if they're here for a week. Because you're going to have a lot of Airbnb that that would be a be a week stay. So you'd like to try to figure out if they're somebody that's going to rent out a house for a week. You know, then we know we've got customers here that are going into the restaurants and all the shops for the entire week and going to the grocery stores.
Okay, so I added the two questions. How long was your stay? Would you come back? Should we ask another question, which is what? What would make you stay longer?
Yeah.
It's a pretty open ended one again, but we can.
Now, I wonder if one of the things that people are looking for when they choose a town in New England to vacation in is affordability. Because it is a big factor with where a lot of people go on vacation and spend their time. And it is something where people might come to Mystic and say, oh, my God, the seaport's so expensive, you know, I couldn't go there. So I wonder if that's one of the factors to ask about.
Yeah, but I guess that we've got by having some of the open ended questions we get, we get to that. So some of would you stay longer? It's like, well, no, because I couldn't afford it. Or yes, I thought, I mean, in some cases we're inexpensive in comparison to other.
Right, right.
Well. Okay, anybody else got comments on the visitor survey?
There's one more question and you guys can say I'm completely nuts. A lot of you answer surveys from companies this question's asked. And that is, what is your willingness to recommend Mystic as a destination to your family and friends on a scale of one to 10? Ten and nine would be deemed promoters. Those who are seven and eights would be passives. From one to six, you'd be known as detractors. The sum or the subtraction of those who are promoters from detractors is your net promoter score. Most of you have taken a survey and answered that question. Many companies are using it. It just gauges how much people love their visit here. And then you follow up with a question, why? That's it. And it's open ended. It gets a little more complicated to do this. A lot of people use it. When I did research at a company, we always ask this question. It's up to you if you if you think it's too complicated for how we're going to put out the survey, then the satisfaction question probably gets to a lot of what you want to find out. The net promoter score question really finds out how passionate people are about their visit here as a visitor.
I I think that that's actually the the most important question. A net promoter score is highly effective in figuring out, you know, if people are promoting your whatever it is, your brand. I've used it in the past and I fully support using it. I think it's a great idea and I don't think it's too complicated. It's pretty simple for people to answer that question.
I agree. It comes from Bain Consulting. They started it about 15 years ago. Many large consumer companies, hotels have adopted it.
Okay, and I guess, you know, we're asking this question to visitors and in this case they are the consumer and and we're trying to raise tax dollars is there. Okay, so the only question is, is it worthwhile to ask the follow on question, which is why? Or do we think we've probably captured that in the other questions?
My opinion would be, I think you probably could capture that in the other questions. If we weren't asking any of these, I would highly recommend asking that follow up question, but maybe we could do without it this time.
Because we're asking, what did you most like about your visit? Or we could get rid of that one. And then just put why after.
Do that.
Do that. Yeah. And we might change the placings around of these questions as well. Okay, let's move on to the survey questions for TCA D business and property owners. So let's start with the business and property owners. Chris. Any additional questions? So there's only about 20 different well, there's about 20 different property owners. There's obviously a lot more people who've got businesses in the area, but it's still not a huge number. And I was thinking we could probably do a mailer to people.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I think I stated the what I think the improvements around us would be ideal is to get the utilities underground and then get additional signage where it's more walkable, bikeable. So people are not using using their cars. I mean, they tried to do a trolley before, but it didn't work because nobody, not everybody bought into it. And plus you're going down a two lane road that gets backed up and you're just stuck in traffic in a trolley. You probably get there quicker by walking. So unless you get majority of them off the roads, it's not going to have as big of an impact. I think a water taxi would definitely help downtown because it will get people to go on the water because it's it's something different. They're out of their cars and more likely will use that. And if you can use that to connect to the seaport to down And if you can use that to connect to the seaport to downtown, uh, I think you'll you'll see a big uptick in regards to that.
Okay, so question three, what improvements could be made to Stony, by by Stony to improve your investment or business? And all of those things which you listed, could people could put into a into a uh a free format text box?
Yeah. Yeah, and I and I and I would, I would, I would, I would say this, you probably want to um do a beautification type of scenario where you could have the street, I mean, the sidewalk, like um um, you know, lights where you could hang uh flowers often. Uh, it would soften the commercialization of the properties.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, I'm going to go and flip that one back under under the vision document. So basically flowers hanging by my desk. Yeah, so what we want to try to do is maybe see if people offer up ideas which we hadn't thought of, which we can then include under the bullet points for uh the vision document.
Kevin, this is, this is Bruce. I have a um a ten o'clock meeting that I have to leave for. I just want to let you guys know.
Okay, thank you very much. I think we've we've made a lot of good progress. Um, uh, I say just before you run then, uh, so do you, any any points on the Stone, the uh the uh questions for Stonington residents?
Um. Yeah, I I think that if you're, why do you go to exit ninety area now? It may be just because you live there, like to get off, I'm not like it, it's 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 a, it's broad. So like if I live, you know, somewhere in Stonington, I may get off that exit just to get to my house.
So we should add that.
Yeah. Why do you, yeah.
Yeah, basically.
I think everything else looks good.
Okay, anybody else who has to leave at ten o'clock, other uh things you'd like to add to the Stonington residents?
I I have a ten o'clock, but I just want to go back to the last question uh to the business owners on number five. Are you thinking about investing more in your business? Um, I'm wondering if we want to ask a follow up to that and and find out what they're investing in. Not necessarily very specific uh items, but infrastructure or non-infrastructure would be, I think, pertinent to your work. Um, you know, particularly if it's infrastructure improvements.
Happy to say what type of investment?
Sure.
Yeah, I think the best way to to add it. Okay, um, Bill Middleton.
I think he jumped off already.
Did he? Okay, fine. Um, Sherry, separately, I wanted to, I'll I'll give you a call. I wanted to talk about what grants or opportunities there might be for doing surveys uh with regards to tourism.
All right, I'm putting my cell phone in the chat box.
Okay. Um, and that's the best way to to find you?
It it is, yeah, work remotely. Um, so give me a call anytime and uh I'll see you guys soon. Thanks.
Okay, Sherry, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay, so then who have we still got on? There's a question is, I'll 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 clean up the uh the the surveys. And then we're going to figure out how do we, how do we get the survey out to the different constituents? I think the the for the residents and the property owners, that's a little bit easier. Um, ideas for how do we get the visitors um to go answer a a survey?
Um, is that, that that's a question for this? You're asking a question, generic question to us, correct, Kevin?
To every, to everybody, yeah.
You know, I I I cringe when I say this, but ideally it would be great if we can use something that could be used uh through a mobile app.
Yeah, I I I got one comment before I jump off. We got free wifi at the village.
Yep.
So if uh somebody uses our wifi, we get their information. So we could probably uh get all that information. And then you could send out um a questionnaire to them.
That that if, so so Chris, the question I have for you, how many, how many, what's the volume of people that you get signed up for that service? We're talking hundreds?
We 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 just, we just uh went live with it. And um, you know, I still got to put additional signage, but our whole property is free wifi. So if somebody wants to come in and do a Zoom meeting, they could sit in our parking lot. Uh, if they want to do a class, they could sit in the parking lot and walk the grounds. Um, but it's um, so we we've, during the pandemic, we decided to make it free wifi. Um, and I believe the seaport's doing the same thing. Not entirely everything on their property, but we have, I think, sixteen deacons throughout our property. Um, so we have strong wifi. Um, so I know Tina DeTelle from Channel Eight uses it all the time.
Okay, that's 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 good to know. Chris, do you know if the um, do you do you know any of the hotel owners?
Yes. Yeah.
Because because maybe that's a group that we should also go to and figure out whether we think the front desks could ask these questions. Um, and because I'm sure the owners would be interested in.
Yeah, I mean, the big, the big thing that we lacked in the past is, is people being engaged. Um, and that's where like the trolley didn't work because it didn't really take off to the extent that it made it economically feasible to do it. It always has to be subsidized. Um, but if we, if we can get engagement from everybody, um, then then it works. So, yeah, I'd be willing to help out on any of that stuff.
Hey, Chris, when you uh, when they access your wifi, my assumption is they're allowing you to share the information that they give you. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, they basically give us their email and then they're able to use uh the wifi.
Okay, and so you're protected in the event the town uses that information provided by a visitor um for a service.
We can, we can market to them, so I could take, I could take the survey and put it, I could talk to my uh, my uh marketing agency and make sure that we're we're covered for that.
So so Kevin, that covers a good sample size of volume that comes to that area. It doesn't cover all those who stay in hospitality overnight, but it will cover day travelers because candidly, I frequent Mystic Village four or five times a week. Okay, I go there. I just go eat there. I go to get coffee there. If you, if we can get the hotels to participate in the same survey with information that's available to them that they're willing to share, then you're going to get a broader representative sample of visitors, truly visitors.
Yes.
And and you could also, the way with the survey could get structured, and I can help you with it, Kevin, is we can kick out anyone who uses Chris's wifi that's a non visitor by having a qualifying question, are you a resident of Stonington? Or are you a visitor to the Stonington, the Mystic area? And just leave it at that.
And but maybe in an ideal world, we'd actually then split them two and have the visitors go to one set of questions and the residents go to another set of questions.
Correct.
Yeah, and we've also got, we've also got Stoneton sixteen forty.
Okay, I gotta jump, guys. Appreciate it, guys.
Okay, okay, we'll be in touch. Thanks, Chris. Um, yeah. Okay, so I think we're uh. Yeah. Okay, so I think that it's it's ten o'clock, so I'm going to uh adjourn the meeting. Um, I'll make another revision based on what we have talked about and distribute that to to everybody and then we'll we'll set up. And I think we've got, yeah, so now we've got a little bit of a path forward. I think the next one will be actually a planning meeting to figure out how do we actually go ahead and execute on getting the surveys out there and getting the responses.
Thanks for all your work on this, Kevin.
Okay, I hope we get somewhere.
Kevin, you did a great job. You really did a great job. You you did, I.
Okay.
Other than be picking on you with car parks, I felt bad to tell you that, but it brought back memories of all my London trips.
After twenty five. After twenty five, then you think I would have, I would have got all my terminology right, but I haven't. Yeah. Okay, have a buddy.
Bye bye.
Thanks, bye bye.